Okay, good. Okay, so we will reconvene this Snore City Council meeting for Monday, November 2nd at 5:00, and we are starting a few minutes late, 5:09 due to technical difficulties. Councilmember Garaventa, would you do the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
Hey, everyone. Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common law of politics, stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please, Mary Rose.
Mayor Hawkins?
Here.
Mayor Protem Plummer?
Did we lose Mark?
Mayor Protem Plummer?
Should I text him?
I don't see Mark. He looks to be muted.
He was.
Mark's muted, yeah. He should be able to hear you, though.
And he can unmute himself as well.
He's on a phone, Doug. He's calling in.
Mm-hmm.
What's the last three, 626 or 431? Or 74?
Yeah, hold on, let me grab it. Just, I'll go with everybody else. Councilmember Garaventa?
Here.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Satch?
Here. And Mark is 143. Let me just grab his last digits. Yeah, 7143.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Yeah, tonight is 7143. Let's see, 7143. I know Nubia had put him as Mark Plummer.
He must have dropped because I don't see that on here.
Okay.
And I don't see.
He came on as Mark Plummer earlier.
Yeah, I don't see him on here any longer, which means he may have lost reception or dropped.
Just so everyone knows, he's out on a fire, I guess, falling timber, so.
Falling snags, yes.
For the moment, Mayor Mark Plummer, Mayor Protem Plummer is absent.
Okay. Okay, so we have four here. So we do have a quorum. City Clerks' Report on Agenda Posting.
So I'm going to be reporting out tonight, but your next meeting, you'll actually be having your Deputy City Clerk reporting out for you. For this meeting, the agenda was posted on Thursday, October 29th at 2:00 PM.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Anyone want to move anything? Everything look fine? Okay?
And Mark says he'll be in in two minutes. I just got a text.
Cool.
I move to approve. Did someone already do that?
We don't need a motion to approve.
Yeah, we're fine.
I never move to approve.
I think it's one of those Sundays for everybody with the election looming and everything else, so. Okay, so.
The agenda.
We have presentations. Introduction of Jody Sledge, Executive Assistant/Deputy City Clerk. Mary Rose?
So, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to introduce our new Assistant, Executive Assistant Deputy City Clerk, Jody Sledge, and she's actually on the call tonight. She is muted, and so is her video. So Doug, if you happen to see her, I don't know if she can unmute herself, but she is on the call, Jody Sledge. She, as you recall, at final budget in August, the council voted to approve a new position for Executive Assistant Deputy City Clerk. We have been vacant of our elected city clerk for about two years now, and those duties have passed on to staff. And as you are well aware, the duties of city clerk are extremely important, ensuring administration of our city records, agenda management, election oversight, contact, conflict of interest laws, and so forth, as well as general executive assistant duties here within the office. So I'm very happy to report that we have made a hire. Jody Sledge hails from Avery over in Calaveras County, and she is making the commute over. She is a part-time position, so she will be here Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and then also logging on and doing our city council meetings on Monday evenings. So welcome, Jody.
Hello. Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And so going forward, she will be doing your clerking duties as the Deputy City Clerk going forward on your meetings.
Cool, this is the part where she has an hour's speech, right?
No, no, we're a little behind, Councilmember Garaventa.
Welcome aboard, Jody.
Looking forward to working with you.
And thank you for the opportunity.
Excellent, okay. So, public comment on any non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes of presentation, and this is for non-agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
I would.
Okay, it's Lori Lehman. Go ahead, Lori.
Yeah, hi. So I just wanted to call your attention to the fact that the wall at Lyneburg Street has been painted with a generous donation from Bill Canning and his son-in-law, who did the work. And we will be rehanging the historical banners starting on Wednesday morning. So we should be getting Lyneburg back to looking just spiffy. So I just wanted to call your attention to that. Thank you.
Looks great, Jody.
Yeah, terrific, thank you, Lori.
Yep. Thank you. And thank you to Bill Canning for his donation.
Say thank you to him next time I see him.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak on public comment for non-agenda items?
If you'd like to speak, please use the Raise Your Hand function, or, which can be found under Participants, just a button that says Raise Hand, or you can press *9 if you are using a regular phone.
I don't see anybody. Doug?
Okay.
The City Council.
Okay, so moving on to the Consent Calendar. Items on the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless the council member or members of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Number three is approval of dispersments in the amount of $142,362.93 for payroll, inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions, retrospective pay, holiday pay, and equity adjustments. And number four is approve city council minutes for November 4th, 2019, November 18th, 2019, and December 2nd, 2019.
Councilmember Satch?
I would like to pull the minutes.
Okay. Okay, so, anything else? I get there's only two items to be pulled, so. So looking for a motion for.
Public comment.
Oh, duh.
That's what I was waiting for.
Sorry. Any public comment on the consent calendar?
I don't see any public comments. I don't see any hands raised. Again, if you have public comment for the first item of our consent calendar, please raise your hand, but I don't see any public comments.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion and/or.
Move to approve the consent calendar, item three.
I second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Garaventa and a second by Councilmember Sagerstrom. Okay, Mary Rose, roll call, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Satch?
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Aye.
I am also lining up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem Plummer?
Aye.
Okay.
For the record, for the record, Mayor Protem Plummer has arrived and is in the meeting.
Passes five to, oh, okay, so under consent calendar for item number four for the council minutes? Councilmember Satch?
There are just a few items that I actually would like more information in the minutes. And the first one is on page eight, under New Business, and it's reviewed. Director Kellogg reviewed the agreement with the property owner of the buildings on either side of Lyneburg Street closure project. And I asked a question about the need for permitting. I actually would, in that situation like that, I would like that question to be answered, not just that I asked the question, but what the answer was to the question. And I'm happy to do that, to look that up and fill that part in, but I think it should, I just think for someone coming back and reading these minutes to try to figure out what happened, it's important to add a few details.
It's just not to try to interrupt you. Is it possible we could bring number four back with maybe the questions?
And I just have the answers for it.
Yes.
Sure, that would be great.
That would be perfect, because I know we got some, you know, a few people waiting.
On here. I would love to do that if that's all right with the rest of the council.
Okay, so if we could just bring item number four back at our next meeting, I think that would be.
I promise, Mary Rose, I'll have it done.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Why are we approving the council member, these?
Because they were never approved.
Because they were.
They were never approved. We used to approve.
Is this going to happen more than this?
Yes.
We have.
We're behind, way behind.
Yeah, we're way behind, that's been the problem. Do we need to pass these minutes tonight, Doug?
No, you don't. You don't need to pass them tonight, but we do need a motion in order to continue it.
Okay.
Are there going to be, are there a lot of corrections, or?
Well, I mean, this is my, these are my notes. I mean, why don't we just do it, next week I can do it really quickly, and then we can, you know, I'll try not to be so personal.
This will be a recurring item on the consent calendar.
Yes.
Yeah, several.
Just from, you know, after December 2019 or prior to?
Probably. I don't know about prior.
I think prior. Actually, I think prior.
So the, for the record, these minutes have been brought forward before we've made the corrections from Councilmember Satch, so we're bringing them forward again. Now that we have Jody on board, she's going through and getting the minutes done. These are, the minutes have not been passed from November 4th, 2019 on.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Okay.
To look forward to.
And councilmembers, if, councilmember, if you weren't there for some of the meetings, it would be appropriate for you to also abstain if you didn't feel comfortable voting on it.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we need a motion to pass them on to the next meeting?
Yeah, we'd ask for a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to continue to the next meeting with the, my questions. And I'll do that.
I guess we're looking for a second.
You probably can second.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Satch and second by Mayor Protem Plummer. Looking for a roll call vote for this.
And this is to the, this is for the, until the next meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mary Rose?
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
I recuse myself since I wasn't there, so.
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
Such.
Aye.
Okay, on to public hearings. Consider Ordinance 873, Amending the Snora Municipal Code, Chapter 8.36, Cannabis Business Regulation, and Ordinance 874, Amending the Snora Municipal Code, Chapter 17.60 dash, or dot 040, Cannabis Businesses, and set a second reading and possible adoption of the ordinances for November 16th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. Mary Rose?
Doug, I need the ability to share the screen. Can I do that, sir?
One second. You should be able to now.
Okay. Can everybody see that?
Should be able to.
I can't.
I think it's the same as this.
Can you see my screen?
I do.
We can see the slide bar too, though, if you want to maximize it.
Oh, why is it on that side? Oh, I know why, it did it.
I can see this.
There, I got it, is that better?
Yes.
Sorry, I had to swap screens. So I'm just going to go through just a brief presentation on the recreational cannabis ordinance as presented. So this is just a recap of what we discussed on September 21st. We talked about Prop 64 and Adult Use of Marijuana Act, which is AMWA. It was passed by voters in November 2016, November 8, and it set forth a regulatory framework for recreational cannabis throughout the state. It was passed here locally within Tuolumne County and also by the City of Sonora voters, but I'll get into that in the next slide. So it legalizes the non-medicinal use of cannabis by persons 21 years of age and over and personal cultivation of six plants. And it also, like I said, created a state regulatory and licensing system for commercial cultivation, testing, and distribution of non-medical cannabis. It also allows local governments to prohibit or regulate licensed commercial non-medical cannabis. It gives local authorities the taxing authority to impose tax on the recreational purchase and cultivation of cannabis. And like I said, it allows us to regulate or prohibit any type of commercial cannabis. And for locals can reasonably regulate but cannot ban any indoor cultivation for personal use. And I believe we addressed that in the last ordinance that came forward in 2018, but I just wanted to rehash what Prop 64, what that law stated when it was enacted in November of 2016. So again, just looking what the vote was for the state of California, also locally here. I know there was a concern during the Planning Commission, and we'll get into that as well, about will voters have the ability to talk or to voice their concern about recreational cannabis? And that was, that was done through Prop 64. So you notice it was passed by California voters by 57.1%. It was passed here in the county of Tuolumne by 52.3%, and was passed here in the city of Sonora by 56.3%, and that's available on the Secretary of State's website, in case you wanted to double-check those figures. And the map there just kind of shows the different county, the counties that voted in favor versus the counties that voted against. The blue counties represent the counties that voted in favor, and the orange voted against. So again, what is currently within the city of Sonora? In January of 2018, the city council approved an ordinance to allow for the establishment of a structure to regulate all cannabis businesses within the city. At the time, the city council only allowed for medicinal or type M licensing for a pilot program. And the city, since 2018, has entered into two development agreements with two separate medicinal cannabis businesses, one of which, and we've talked about this now at a couple of meetings, one of which is fully operational and compliant with city rules and regulations. So looking forward since 2018, what has been the direction of the city council regarding recreational cannabis? Because at the time in 2018, when the city council developed a pilot program, it was to look ahead from a recreational standpoint, to first feel out from a pilot programming how medicinal works here in the city, and then for the potential, for the potential for the city council to look ahead at recreational cannabis. So what has the direction been since 2018 and since the pilot program has been in place? In July 20th of 2020, this past summer, the council directed staff to bring, to draft and bring an ordinance amending the Snora Municipal Code, allowing for the establishment, operation, permitting of recreational cannabis. And then on this past September, September 21st, staff presented drafts of Ordinance 873, amending Chapter 8.36, and Ordinance 874, amending Chapter 17.60.040, which is your zoning ordinance, or excuse me, your zoning title of the code for the city's review and possible direction. There were no, there was no additional direction given to staff at that time to include in those ordinances. The direction that was given to staff was to present those ordinances as drafted, as is to the Planning Commission on October 13th, 2020. So this past October 13th, those ordinances, or excuse me, Title 17, was presented to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted 4 to 1 to reject Resolution 10132020-A, or an ordinance amending Section 17.60.040, uses permitted in specific zones of Chapter 17. So they rejected, so they, there were no findings that the Planning Commission found. They rejected the ordinance. The Planning Commission's denial was based on the commission's recommendation that the city council deny the expansion of the current cannabis ordinance and zoning ordinance to accommodate the recreational sale of cannabis in the city of Sonora. And then just from looking at, from an authority standpoint of the Planning Commission versus the city council, the city council has the authority to uphold the commission's recommendation as the commission acts as an advisory board to the city council. And so they have, the city council has the authority to uphold the commission's recommendation, overturn it, modify it, or send it back for further study. So looking at what the current ordinances as is in the city is versus what is before you in the new recreational cannabis ordinance. It would no longer be a pilot program within the city of Sonora. It would be a fully functional recreational business program, and it would expand the amount of permits from a cannabis dispensary retail business from two to three. It would have the same prohibitions, such as prohibited from operating within 600 feet of a school, youth center, daycare, church, or park. And it's within the same zones that were established under the pilot program, which is your CO, CG, and your light industrial ML zone. For cannabis manufacturing, again, it does away with the pilot program and allows for a full business program. It allows for both medicinal and recreation, allows for the volatile and non-volatile, and it expands the zonings from just your industrial to allowing into your C or your commercial zone. And then, of course, we talked about, when we presented our draft ordinances, it does have an exemption that manufacturing would not, also in all of your business types, it would not be allowed in your Zone A or your downtown business area. So no cannabis businesses would be allowed in your downtown sector, section. So again, expansion, though, for manufacturing from your light industrial to your commercial C zones. Same with testing. It does an expansion of the zoning from light industrial to your C zone as well, commercial. And cultivation stays the same as it is under the pilot program or the current ordinance, which limits the total number of plants allowable to six per resident for personal consumption, and outdoor prohibition is within the ordinance as well. So at this time, I will entertain any questions concerning the ordinances before you.
Anyone want to go first?
I have a question. I would like to hear from our city police chief. And the research that I've been doing, I noticed that law enforcement becomes sort of a focal point, not so much about arrests, but about calls. What did they call them? Just service calls. There's.
Who is speaking?
Oh, anyway, I would like to have calls for service. Our analysis of calls for service in two relatively small college towns suggests that police calls for service did increase after recreational sales began. So I wondered how the police department felt about recreational cannabis.
Police Chief Vanderweil?
That question was from Councilmember Sagerstrom. Sorry, sorry to interrupt, mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can we take off your presentation so we can see the speakers?
So, Police Chief. Ah, there you are.
You hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah. You know, I would support those findings. There's so many factors into, that go into, you know, increased crime statistics, calls for service and whatnot. And I think the passing of Prop 64 and the introduction of dispensaries in communities do play a factor. For instance, we've increased our total incidents from 2018 to 2019 to the 2,500 additional incidents from the previous year. And I think if we go back a couple of years, we'll see that as a trend. We can't say that each and every call for service is a result of the introduction of marijuana into the community, or at least a commercial marijuana into the community. But those of us in the law enforcement circles, and those of us that respond to calls for service, do see an increase of usage, possession, and, you know, associating them to possibly the reasons we're being called to respond. I guess in short, more people are high these days, and, you know, it's difficult to make decisions in an altered state. So, but to have those staffs to support it, to say that these are the number of calls associated with, you know, our marijuana dispensaries is a very, very difficult thing to do in any jurisdiction. You know, I would say that, that we can, we can attribute a portion of our increased call for services to the increased amount of usage in our community, for sure.
Anyone else? Mayor Protem Plummer, did you have any questions before I turn it over to the public comment?
Well, I did, and that was for Chief Vanderweil. And the question basically is, isn't the genie already out of the bottle? Because we are receiving shipments from out of county, out of city, and I'm perfectly willing to believe that a percentage of those are due to the increased drug use, but I'm afraid that we've already seen the drug use increase. So, isn't the genie already out of the bottle there?
I would agree with that. Yes, it is. So it's here, it's in our community, whether it's medicinal, whether it's, you know, recreational. It's in our community, and, you know, whether or not it's one or the other, I can see the benefits, you know, of securing tax revenues from the recreational cannabis dispensaries to assist with, you know, regulation and enforcement, you know, from a city standpoint. So if it's here, definitely see if it's moving forward on this, this ordinance.
That's one more question.
Oh, Councilmember Sagerstrom has a question also.
Another question for Chief.
Thanks, Mark.
For Chief Vanderweil, do you see any particular age range of usage?
Oh, it's, it's, it seems to increase, you know, across the board, but I would see most definitely within. Oh, it's, 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 it seems to increase, you know, across the board, but I would see uh most definitely within uh, you know, the, the late teens to uh late twenties, early thirties are probably the the biggest increases we've seen. And that's just, you know, that's the educated assumption.
Right. Anecdotal kind of. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so I guess at this time, we will turn it over to public comment. Uh, on, on these ordinances, I would ask that everyone, it's, it's a heightened time of stress right now. I would ask that everyone is very respectful, we're not all going to agree or disagree or what have you. So I just ask that everyone is respectful in their um comments and questions. And um, I believe Doug, um, we're gonna, we're gonna look for hands raised. So Doug, I guess I'll turn this part over to you.
Yeah, mayor, and um, so if members of the public would like to speak, we got two members who have their hands, three members have their hands raised already. Uh, but uh, if, if, please use the raise your hand feature, if you're using a computer or um uh tablet or smartphone device, look under participants and you can see the raise your hand button. Or if you're using a regular phone, uh, you can press star nine and that will raise your hand. Uh, with that, mayor, we have four hands raised with the first one being, um, apologies if I say anything wrong, but, and Wes.
And and we will be limiting, limiting it to three minutes a person?
I'll be that, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
So I'm not a marijuana smoker at all, but I do use CBD for my knees uh while hiking in my day. Here's the biggest issue that I see, it's already here, you can call the delivery companies from every county around us and they'll deliver here. So that part of keeping it out of here is probably never going to be the competition. You have one place here that nobody goes to because their prices are astronomical. Again, I don't smoke cannabis, I do use it for my knees. I believe people that are here are stuck to one store, which is kind of a monopoly, and I don't agree it should be that way. There should be a couple choices. That, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, whoever's got their hand raised next.
It'd be David Winslow, mayor.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Hi, thank you very much. So um, I'd like to address this idea of popularity because I think that because something is popular, we often make the mistake of thinking that therefore must be correct. But history is chock full of ideas that were popular at their time and turned out to be very bad mistakes. Uh, the one I'd like to mention most recently is all the doctors uh several years ago thought that opioids were a great idea and that we should be handing them out more to people who have pain, turned out to be a very, very bad idea, costing the country hundreds of millions of dollars. And just because this particular proposition was popular doesn't mean that it is correct. Also, when popular, uh, popular decision sixty-four was passed, I think a lot of people voted for it for two things. One was it gave local um governments the decision to decide whether or not they were going to make it legal in their jurisdiction or not. And it also said that we could limit it to medical use. I'd like to talk a little bit about the idea of marijuana as a medicine, I agree with that one hundred percent. It is certainly a drug, it certainly can help people, so let's treat it as a medicine. When we have medicines, we have pharmacies we go to where people who are very well trained, deliver them out, they are strong. They certainly do good for people, but as anyone who is in pharmacy knows, they also can do bad for people. And you don't just hand them out as recreation, I can't imagine us having a debate over whether or not we were going to start handing out all medicines for recreational purposes, right? If it is a drug, let's treat it like a drug, we already have medical marijuana, let's keep it there. It is not a recreational thing, just like opioids are not recreational. The young people look carefully at what we do. I am a teacher of twenty-three years at the high school and I.
Hold on just one second, please, sir, um, we kind of lost your signal.
Coming because as adults are following that same thing. If we make it legal here for recreational use, that's going to just filter right down to the young people that saying, well, the adults say it's recreational, so it's fine for us to do it also. There are lots of hidden costs for our community despite the money that I know this will bring in. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Um, mayor, next up would be Julie Battle.
Hi, I'm also a teacher at Somerville Union High School. And I am opposed to expanding. Um, I deal with fourteen to eighteen-year-olds on a daily basis. And at Somerville High School, we've been battling against marijuana use um through a variety of methods. And um, it's just so detrimental, not only to our students, who I'm going to follow up on Mr. Winslow there, who see parents doing it at home or they're doing it alongside their children. And it really sends a mixed message. And um, we see just an incredible um struggle against it where students start smoking marijuana and it leads into other um things, especially during COVID, being home um for so long, almost seven months. We have had students returning to campus and um we're just seeing an increased use of it during that time. And it could be um for a variety of reasons, but um I'm opposed to, I just see it as a parent, I have three children. And um, I would hate to see our community affected in multiple ways that I see as a detriment. Um, if we expand on this, so I hope that you would vote no against it. Um, and I appreciate your time, it's a little scattered, sorry, my son got in an accident and I can hear him crying. But I really wanted to just call in and give a teacher's perspective at the high school level, how we're just seeing and um. I'm going to add one more thing that I guess it sends a mixed message when we're on campus and we're fighting so strongly against it. And it would be something that at home would be allowed. So I hope you would consider the high school teacher and educator's perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, mayor, next up would be Cynthia Holman.
Okay.
I thank you. Um, my, yeah, my name is Cynthia Holman and I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm, I work as a school counselor at one of our elementary schools. Um, and I'm also the co-founder, uh, co-founder of a suicide, uh, faith-based suicide prevention ministry. And I do suicide prevention trainings and um here in our county, I've been doing um the trainings um since two thousand and ten. And it, we already in Toomey County, we have um a very high rate of suicide um compared to other counties in our state in two thousand and eighteen. We had eighteen suicide, which is four times the rate of suicides in our state. Um, but unfortunately, it gets even worse because for every suicide, a hundred and thirty-six people are impacted by that devastating loss, which in two thousand and eighteen, we saw um over twenty-four hundred um people impacted by the loss of a loved one to suicide. And we know that um within a, a two-week period of time, about twenty-seven hundred people, five percent of our population is walking around having thoughts of suicide. So that, so why, why is, why am I saying all of this, why is this important? Um, because the research, research shows that marijuana increases the risk of suicide. Um, in a report from Colorado, it, it said that since the recreational marijuana was legalized, the percent of suicide incidence in which toxicology results were positive for, for marijuana increased from fourteen percent in two thousand and thirteen to twenty-three percent in two thousand and eighteen. The National Institutes of Health report that cannabis use was a relevant risk factor associated with both suicidal attempts and behaviors in psychotic and non-psychotic samples. WebMD says not only were those who smoked marijuana more likely to suffer depression and suicidal thoughts, they were also more than three times as likely to attempt suicide between the ages of eighteen.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, so my obvious concern is that more access to marijuana will increase the risk of suicide, increase the number of suicides in our county, and increase the grief and loss suffered by thousands. And I agree with the, the, the city of Sonora Planning Commission to reject the idea of the recreational marijuana stores. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just one last time, if you have, um, if you'd like to make a comment, um, please use the raise your hand feature, mayor, the only, uh, we have one more that came on. Uh, Darren, we, um, mayor, we have Darren Dewes, uh, who has raised his hand a second time, so um, you have to decide whether or not, because usually we only let people speak once.
Yeah, I was gonna, gonna say unless we had some big questions and answered, and it looks like the council doesn't have any other questions for anybody again. I think we'll just stick with the one time.
Okay.
So is there, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue?
Yeah, we got three more. Um, oh, five more, no, that went quick. Um, so uh, we'll go with uh the person who's labeled as Bob, um, would be next, mayor.
Bo, Bong or Bob?
I know, Bob, Bob, B O B.
Oh, you just never know with Zoom, so um, go ahead, we're listening.
I'll not be better, so.
Thank you, Doug, uh, yeah, I'm Bob Kirk, and um, we all know about peer pressure. Um, well, there is a lot of peer pressure being exerted by the marijuana industry. Countries, states, counties, and cities are all under pressure to cave in and go down this slippery slope. The lure of tax revenue is often used as a justification. However, did you know that according to the California State Association of Counties, known as CSAC, only twenty-two percent of the counties in California allow storefront recreational marijuana sales? And did you know that only eighteen percent of cities in California allow storefront recreational sales? Why is it that eighty percent of local governments in California have bans in place? Could one reason be that you know these stores are greatly increasing youth access? You know, it's easy to go on YouTube and find videos of adults buying marijuana at a local dispensary and turning around and selling it to kids. I was talking to Jeff Musio the other day, and he said he is aware of two incidents where customers of hazy Bulldog Farms did this. While it is great to know he has banned those two customers, what about the ones he doesn't know about? And will two more stores do any better in this regard? I urge the council to resist the pressure to follow the money and follow what is best for our community and our youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the, the next hand that we have up, um, name is Mel Kirk.
Okay.
Mel, you need to unmute yourself. Okay, there we go, I'm here now. Yep. Council, thank you for allowing a public comment on this issue. Um, I am a local Toomey County resident, I've been born and raised here, thirty-eight years old. I currently own a, a building in downtown Sonora, operate several small businesses within, within the county and a very large global enterprise, uh, multinational. I'm the former president of the Columbia College Foundation Board, and I currently sit on a board called Toomey Safe, which is nonprofit concerned with mitigating life-threatening situations here in Toomey County. Um, I think it's, it's an honor and a pleasure to give back in any way that I can to the county that raised me and gave me a safe and loving environment to grow up in. Uh, you know, I have friends, both younger and older than I, who use recreational marijuana products. And I really have not yet seen any public benefit resulting from this use. However, I do see people becoming lazy and irresponsible. This might not be so bad for a doctor or a lawyer who's established and uh brings in sizable income and can afford to have a few off days or even trend downward. But for young people, this is a real problem. Um, they're, they're kind of trading their time for being energetic, young people who could be productive, innovative, uh, create amazing things. Uh, they're exchanging all that for periods of chilling, getting high with their friends, and doing nothing. And I believe that a short-term boost in revenue for the city is going to end up in very long-term losses in tax revenue. As these adults, uh, these minors turn into adults and the use of these products uh trends lower and lower. Uh, we've heard already that young people are using these um illegally. It's just going to ruin their future, and you know, I think that we need to look further down the road. We should try to create businesses here in this town that we can be proud of, businesses that create products and services that lift society. Um, and I'm committed and willing to do that, in fact, I invest my own time and energy on this consistently. I'm looking to partner with uh similar like-minded people. Um, and I'll just say I'd be ashamed if this is my business and that this is what I was trying to promote, I would not be able to look my kids in the eye and tell them that I'm doing a good job for them in their future. So I hope that you will vote down this ordinance and that we can work together to build business and enterprise that is uh reckon, you know, recognized for hard work, good products, and uh good jobs, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next name is Phil Nichols.
Hi, that's me. Um, it, it's a couple of comments, one, um, we, we talk about the problems for uh young people, the effects of them. But it seems to me that we also have alcohol and tobacco that are licensed and sold, I'm sure these are bought by people who can legally buy them and then give them to young people. So I think that too, um, I, I don't think that marijuana changes that. I think that um, I think that if we're going to be addressing the issues of young people, the problems they face, these are very big issues in our society. And I think to uh, to try to say, well, if we, if we identify marijuana and we just somehow try to stop that, um, the, the problems are still going to be there, and I think they need to be addressed in education and in our society in a much broader fashion. Uh, the other thing is uh that, that like, uh, like uh Mr. Plummer suggested earlier, we, we have marijuana in the county. Um, and I think having one more place where it can be purchased is um, is, is not going to be that detrimental to our county. So as far as the tax part, I don't, I'm not thinking about that, I'm thinking just about the matter of um uh, just making it available for those who want to have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, um, the next name I've got is um, I'm not, sorry if I say it wrong, Daska Babic, Babcock?
Thank you. My name is Daska Babcock, I'm the mother of two students here in Sonora, one attends Sonora Elementary School and the other attends Sonora High School. Um, kids in our household have been offered drugs as they walk to the school bus stop. Now granted, um, those, we don't know where those drugs were purchased, but it seems very clear that if we triple the number of dispensaries in town and we've got uh a much larger local supply of marijuana, then we're going to see more sales of it. And once the product is out in the community, it filters out to people whose intentions are not good and they see an opportunity to um share the product around and it gets offered to people like my kids. When the recreational use of marijuana was legalized, California state law gave each community the, the chance to decide whether they want that, those sales happening in their community. So I think we ought to exercise our right to make that choice and be the ones who say, this is not what we want, this is not what we want being offered to our young people. Um, if you are an adult and you want to order it from another county, that's fine, but we do not need to expand the market here. I had the chance to attend the zoning commission's meeting on this issue in October and I noticed that Mr. Musio, the owner of the local dispensary that is operating, suggested that the zoning commission not only um pass or approve the ordinance that was being proposed, but that they also um decreased the entry cost for other dispensaries. The only reason for him to make that suggestion The only reason for him to make that suggestion is that he understands, like, um, he understands the common sense notion that if there are more places selling it, the demand will increase and that will circle around and help his business. We cannot fail to consider the costs that increased marijuana usage in our community will have. Our, we have a vehicle, a family vehicle that was totaled by a guest of a neighbor who looked.
Thirty seconds.
Consuming marijuana. They didn't have insurance, they weren't responsible, and they did not take responsibility for totaling that car. Those are costs that don't get added up, but that quickly outweigh any tax revenue benefit from selling more marijuana.
And you are.
I also had a car stolen last year by a man who appeared to be under the influence of marijuana. So again, these are, there, there are a lot of costs that get.
And your time is up.
That, that are not made up for by a little bit of increased revenue from recreational sales. I would urge the council to vote against. Thank you.
Yeah, your, your time is up. Thank you. Doug, do we have anyone else?
Yeah, we got a few. Patrick, I see your hand waving. I'll, I'll get to you in just a minute. So we got some phone numbers now, so I'm gonna go by the last three. So caller with the last three of six two six.
Caller with the last three digits of six two six. Doug, do you wanna go on to a different one?
Sure, um, let me rename them so I can find them again as they try to.
Six took their hand down and seems to be no longer interested in commenting.
It was, as mayor, I unfortunately took their name down when I called. So that's why I wanted to rename them so I could come back and, they got their hand up, but they need to unmute. So I'm gonna come back to six two six. Mayor, last three of three six nine.
The person who has the.
Hey, this is Anaya Kirk.
Three.
You hear me? Anaya Kirk?
Yes.
Go ahead, guys, for having this meeting. First, first off, I wanna know, I sent you guys an email about the C H K S study. I just wanna confirm if you guys got that, so maybe after that question. But you guys all know where I stand. I mean, I ran on this when I was, I, I, I was a juvenile probation officer in Mersey County. I've been a youth pastor with kids. I have my own kids, soccer coach, baseball coach. Um, so I knew that if the end goal here, you guys, is really to eventually go to recreational marijuana policy, but also, um, large cultivation. Jeff has said in board meetings that he has a hundred to two hundred million dollar idea operation. Uh, I did a quick Google search. Most of the local Walmarts get between sixteen point five and fifty-nine million. So how is his business gonna go from one hundred to two hundred million? I don't know, other than I think the end game here is large cultivation goes. So, uh, I think it's important that we know where this is headed. I, I, you know, even though I, I have my own beliefs about marijuana, I think the medicinal argument was pretty justifiable. I met a lot of people during the campaign and people have come in contact with since who have had cancer, who have had really horrible illnesses, and medicinal was the answer for a lot of them. So I think it's pretty justifiable and understandable, uh, you know, the medicinal side of things. And, and to have that storefront, I, I get that. But make no mistake, this is, from here on out, you guys, the decisions that you make, the decisions that we're gonna make at the board, this is strictly about money, strictly about revenue. It's about, you know, I mean, I mean, the reality of it is, all this stuff is being brought up because we got budget problems. And I'm a firm believer, you know what? To me, I don't care about somebody. I care more about the future of our kids. Uh, to throw in, you know, to just throw in the talent that everybody around us is doing it. You know, I have the data. I sent you guys some data. Um, our kids are already battling with this, and the more we continue to desensitize them and the more, um, if we go down the road, there's gonna be collateral damage. There's no doubt. And so, um, the last thing I wanna say, part of, part of the reason why I'm so passionate about this issue, uh, my cousin Kaylin Kirk, he, he overdosed last year, last March on heroin, and he passed away. He was point nine years old. Uh, but I'll never forget what his aunt told me, and when he was.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. He, he looked at a picture of him when he was fifteen years old and he told his mom, hey, I was immune before I started smoking pot. And so for him, it was a recognition that when he, it was the beginning of the end for him. It did leave to heroin. I know it doesn't do that for everybody, but that's the personal side behind, behind why I'm so passionate about this. And now he's twenty-nine years old and he's, he's gone. So please understand what the end game here is, and let's put, you know, our kids ahead of any sort of finances. I'd love to partner with you guys and, and, uh, I just wish you guys the best of luck in it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Doug?
And so for those of you who are on the phone, if you need to try to unmute yourself, you press star six to unmute yourself. Um, and so, um, mayor, let's again try, uh, the phone number with the last three ending in six two six. Yep, he's unmuted now, so go ahead.
Six two six, yeah. Okay, um, my name's David Peters. I'll read it to you so it'll be faster. As a counselor of over forty years with experience both in the California Youth Authority and Vacaville Prison, I'm concerned about the city's rush to increase marijuana-based industry in the city of Sonora by four hundred and fifty percent, including recreational sales and volatile processing, when there has never been a formal evaluation of the quote pilot program under which medical dispensaries have been allowed to exist in the city. It seems that this rush to turn Sonora into the pot processing capital of the motherload is driven by money rather than common sense and consideration of the cautions expressed by the first responders of our community. The promise of huge fees and taxes seem to have blinded us to the moral and fiscal costs of harboring this industry. I would respectfully request that the council honor the recommendations of their own planning council, that ordinance eight seventy-three not go forward. At the initial special meeting regarding this issue in March two thousand seventeen, the record states that the mayor, that Mayor Hocken said, quote, "He is not in favor of recreational use, but sees the benefits of cannabis oil to treat health issues," un, end quote. If he has changed his mind, I would like to know why. The same record states that Councilman Plummer said, quote, "It is important to take the experiences of the police and fire chiefs very seriously," end quote. Yet in every instance I'm aware of, the council seems not to hear the warnings of law enforcement and the fire department regarding the negative effects of this industry. I miss the cautions of past mayor Connie Williams. She truly was concerned about the soul of the city and the protection of its children. She has been and will be missed. I can only hope that this council will follow the example she set and not adopt ordinance eight seventy-three. As a final thing, I think we've had children putting up little flags and ribbons on school fences for years and years saying, don't use drugs, don't use drugs. We've, we've had them do this, we've trained them to do it, and now we're saying it's all okay, that's all passed. You can do whatever you want now. And those children are now confused. That's good enough. That's all I wanted to say. Why do we tell our kids one thing and change our minds later on just because we're gonna get a lot of taxes and increase the city budget for, uh, for no reason at all except for just money? Thank you.
Mayor, your next caller has the last three of one four two.
Caller with the last three digits of one four two.
Again, press star six to unmute yourself.
Caller with the last digits of one four two.
Yes, sir.
Good, go ahead.
Uh, good, good evening, Sonora City Council and City Administrator. Uh, my name's Zach. I'm a Toomey County resident. Uh, there was a rumor going around that our small town, that the Bourbon Barrel location in downtown Sonora is currently being purchased with the intent to convert it into a marijuana bar. If it is being purchased for this purpose, then it would appear a deal has already been struck with these investors that recreational marijuana sales will be allowed. I would like each of you to publicly answer my question, starting with the city administrator. My question being this: Before this meeting, has a deal already been struck with investors to convert the Bourbon Barrel into a dispensary with the understanding that recreational marijuana would be permitted?
Sir, this is your time to talk. We, we, we address questions at the conclusion of public.
Yeah, well.
We'll answer with the, yeah.
Yeah, we'll answer the questions at the end.
He's got, he's still got two minutes if he wants to.
Yeah. You, we, you still have two minutes if you. If you wanna ask.
Well, then I guess you can hold my question till the end. That's all I wanted to ask.
Okay, thank you.
Next mayor is Patrick McDonald.
Go ahead, Patrick.
First of all, I wanna do, along with everyone else, to thank you guys. Thank everybody for making this public hearing available and for, for an open mind for all these, these issues are very serious. Uh, again, my name is Pat McDonald. I'm a retired businessman, uh, one of the founders of one of the larger manufacturing concerns here in Toomey County, a company called MMI, currently employing over sixty employees. I've been a citizen of the county ever since nineteen eighty-two, and my brother and I moved our company here. We raised our family here, we've built homes, and we own businesses and property. And currently, I, and for the last seventeen years, I've been the senior pastor at the Word of Life Fellowship. I'm proud to be a business leader and a faith leader in our community. Those two disciplines, business and faith, give me a rather unique view of the social fabric of our, of our county. It is well documented, has been stated well today in many of these comments, that our culture, particularly our community, is suffering severely from the destructive effects of substance abuse. Unfortunately, I have the personal experience both in family and in business and in my church to see these destructive effects pers- personally and upfront. Substance abuse has been around since long before I've been around, and I've been around a while. And I'm not naive to the thought that by defeating this particular issue, the drug abuse is gonna go away. But it just seems a violation of common sense. It seems unconscionable that we as a culture, as a, as a community, would in any aspect, with our government or any other aspect, would do anything to make it easier for our people, our children particularly, to be able to use marijuana or any of these other gateway drugs. I'm aware that these reputable people have, have presented a lot of very good documents, uh, documentable information, data, statistics. I'm not gonna waste any more time with that. You've seen a tremendous amount of it. I just wanna add my voice to the voices of reason and ask you to vote no on this issue. And thank you once again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Uh, mayor, with that, that would be the conclusion of everybody asking for public comment. Wait, wait, wait. Well, and as I said, that three more show up.
Yeah.
I'm, uh, gonna go with Jay Week is the.
All ready? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenna Weeks. I am speaking as one of the managers at Hazy Bulldog Farms. Here at Hazy, we strive to always have the answer to the question, where does my medicine really come from? Consistently providing the highest quality medicine for our patients is my mission. By allowing for vertical integration, we will not only be able to ensure the quality of our products, but we will also be able to meet the affordability standard that our patients need. Vertical integration will help give our community the freedom to have convenient access to alternative healthcare options without hassle of excessive taxation. There are already a multitude of delivery companies that deliver to non-medical Toomey County area, in turn taxing them an extra fee to do, to do business in our county. At Hazy, we believe everyone should have equal access to quality healthcare. And with vertical integration, we can allow convenient access to alternative medicine without discrimination. With a growing industry of jobs, Hazy Bulldog is here to serve the Toomey County area and come up with new ideas back to our community. Whether it be growth in the job market or more opportunities for our community service work, we are here to give back. Let's put together and bring beauty back to our Golden County. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
I see two, Doug.
Yep, so I see Courtney Musio next.
Hello, um, again, I'm Courtney Musio, um, the wife of Jeff Musio and part owner at Hazy Bulldog Farms. I just wanted to say tonight how Jeff has worked so hard to make Hazy Bulldog Farms part of this community. Um, he's committed to contributing, um, and to continuing his contributions to the community. We now employ six people, and if allowed to continue to grow, our business could employ so many more. Jeff's goals have always included making our community better. We have two young children who we wanna raise in this community. And as business owners, we are always looking out for not only our adult community, but the youth in our community as well. Jeff has shown over the last few years his deep commitment to building a business that will thrive and help our community in multiple ways. Jeff continues to impress me by how committed he is, how he cares about doing business the right way, and how he cares so deeply about our community. Big business is right on our heels. And if you believe in Jeff and the Hazy Bulldog Farms, we can hold them off and do what is right for our community. Recreational cannabis will come, laws will change. Recreational cannabis is already here in ways of, um, delivery that comes into the community. They may not be checking, uh, driver's licenses or things like that. Those are things that we are committed to in this community. We are for this community and we have children in this community, and we wanna do things the right way for this community. Allowing us to be here and to do that will help us in the end as a community. I am fully here one hundred percent for our community, and I know Jeff is, and I know the Hazy Bulldog is. Thank you, and I hope you all have a really great night.
Thank you.
Mayor, the last hand that we have up is, says Hazy Bulldog, but it's Jeff Musio.
Uh, yes, you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, um, I'd like to address a couple of the comments people directed towards me. First, Hazy Bulldog Farms has not seen anybody selling to anybody. I said, if that were the case, I would definitely ban somebody, and I'd have heard of two different cases, and it's the same lady that said something tonight, and that was the first time I'd heard of it. Um, also, the person accusing me of saying that I wanna lower the taxes for other businesses to come into town, um, I think they probably need a lesson in business, because if you invite more competition and that's always better for the consumer, not for the owner. I'm passionate about freedoms and allowing you to follow your dreams and to follow your pursuit of happiness. I believe everybody deserves that. I believe since I'm the only business in town, I think I should open the doors for those other businesses by saying things like, lower the taxes for them, allow them to come in so they can provide jobs for our community. That's what I believe in, the freedoms. I'd also like to address what I've personally done. I believe in this community so much that my family's been here since the nineteenth, early nineteenth century. I've had, my grandfather is a mayor of Sonora, and currently I'm selling my house right now. At the planning department, everybody was saying that cannabis has brought down housing prices, but it's actually up. It's almost doubled since I've been here. In the four years it's been, cannabis has been legalized, housing, housing prices has doubled. I'm selling my house, reinvesting in the community and buying a million dollar, or reinvesting a million dollars worth into this community. I'm trying to buy a commercial building where I can have a bigger lot that is gonna be able to be more secure and be able to have more people park with handicap parking. All these things that I'm investing, I could pocket this money, walk away from this community and call it a day, but instead I'm choosing to invest in contractors, permitting fees and taxes that continuously go into this community, but most importantly, jobs. This bigger building will supply more jobs, more people. That is my ultimate goal. Another thing people said is suicides. You know, cannabis has been considered a central business in the state of California, specifically because it's been proven to prevent suicides. Cannabis is actually a therapeutic medicine, and whether you make it recreational or not, it does prevent people from committing suicide. All these people that are saying crime is up and suicides are up, yeah, wake up, people. There's something called COVID in the community. It's unprecedented. It's a hundred years since we've seen something like this, and it's changing statistics. Blaming it on cannabis is irresponsible. Blaming it on cannabis is irresponsible. This comes down to is there's a couple of issues here. There's already recreational cannabis in the community, and there's already children getting supposedly solicited at their.
Thirty seconds, Jeff.
The question comes down to who do you believe in can prevent this from happening? Illegal shops, recreational shops from out of the county, or somebody that's invested in this community? The other part is, do our citizens deserve this? Do they deserve the the feeling of worth? Do they deserve a sense of accomplishment? Do they deserve their government to allow them these privileges? And if not, what did they do to deserve not to have this? These are jobs that people need, and this is the worth that people have that create a sense of worth and well-being that prevents people from committing suicide. If you're concerned about suicide, give people the ability to have their worth, to work for a day's wage and create jobs in a community and provide that that sense and that attitude towards.
Time is up, buddy.
Wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have one hand raised, but it's six two six, and that would again be somebody who's already spoken.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're only having everyone speak once tonight. But we are giving everybody three minutes and. Those are anyone else that would like to speak?
At this time, mayor, nobody else has their hand raised.
Okay, we're going once. Going twice.
Hello, can you can you hear me?
Yep, so. Still still nobody with a raised hand.
Okay.
I think somebody just accidentally unmuted themselves, so.
Okay, okay, so we will bring it back to the council for discussion and possible vote.
Hello?
So we have brought it back to the council now, so. Okay, so who would like to?
Well, the one the one thing that stands out in my mind is there was a gentleman who asked about the where the bourbon barrel used to be, and it was going to be some deal and all that. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Rose, but if I understand from what I'm reading in this ordinance, that would you couldn't have that business in that location because it's downtown property. So this ordinance, that that scenario could not exist. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, sir, and I can ask Rochelle to clarify that. Also, as staff, we haven't heard anything to that regard, but Zone A would incorporate the bourbon barrel. And Rochelle, I just want to make sure that that's correct, but your downtown businesses would include the bourbon barrel that would not be allowable for any type of cannabis cannabis businesses. Is that correct, Rochelle? If you're on the line.
I'm waiting for her to unmute herself.
I just want to make sure I don't have a map in front of me, but I wanted to make sure that Zone A incorporated it back there.
She's unmuted.
All right, I was just looking at the map myself. So that business location is outside of Zone A.
Oh.
However, there's also the other requirements, and I couldn't tell you without they'd have to do a full analysis whether it's within six hundred feet of all the other items that are listed as areas that it cannot be within. But it is right outside of Zone A.
Well, I mean, I can say this as the mayor. I haven't spoken to anybody. Mr. Kennedy is at least a good acquaintance, if not friend of mine, and he hasn't said a word to me about that, and I do occasionally talk to him, so I haven't. I haven't heard anything, so I don't know if any other council members have heard anything.
Mayor, I do see that Jeff is showing some kind of map, and while it wouldn't, it may be. It may make sense to, since it's about whether or not he's buying, he's buying that property, makes sense to unmute it to him to let him at least answer that specific question. And then, as a side note, seven one four, who was the one who was unmuting themselves? I don't remember whether or not they spoke earlier, but they have raised their hand and gone back and forth, so I don't know if you want to reopen it and see if they want to speak as well.
If seven one four has not spoken, then I'm okay with that, and I don't I don't believe that they did speak.
So let me do this before we go to to assuming that mayor, you're okay with allowing Jeff to answer that question. I think we can let seven one four speak first.
Yes, I believe the council is definitely okay with letting Jeff speak since he would be in interest to party.
Okay, can are we doing? Okay, I guess we're doing Jeff first then.
Yeah, definitely. When you guys take into consideration the parks, the schools and the daycares, everything from the Arco Station all the way past. Basically, the post office is blocked out. There is zero businesses from the Arco going to Columbia to the post office. So the bourbon barrel is absolutely eliminated under current ordinances. And I am not trying to buy it for that reason.
So okay, I'm gonna lower his hand, mayor, and then I'm gonna ask seven one four to unmute themselves.
The person with the last three digits is seven one four. We're giving your chance since you did not speak before.
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Jesse Rice. I'm a resident of the city of Sonora, and I'm a retired correctional officer. And having worked at Solidad State Prison, as well as the local facilities here at Conservation Center. And I would just like to say that over the years during of my career, I've spoken with many inmates and and against the arguments of some, I've had them tell me that marijuana itself has been a gateway drug to some of the life issues issues that they've developed, including increased drug usage. And so basically, I just want to call in and also express that I was a drug user myself as a young man, as a teenager. And I think I can confidently say that for the grace of God, I would probably have taken a track that would have led me to being on the inside of the prison instead of on the outside. I was on a track to committing crimes and and I had trouble disconnecting from the usage of marijuana. And I know back in the sixties, it was not the doesn't have the potency level that the drugs do now, as I've seen reported, not experienced. But I would like to go on record as being against the expansion of the usage of recreational marijuana in the county. And I would not be disturbed if all at all if they were at some point shut down completely. But I do understand the expressions that some have made as far as the benefits that they feel they get from the medical usage of marijuana. So that's not something I'm experienced enough to address. But I would like to go on record and urge the council, if you would please vote no on this usage of recreational marijuana in the city or county of Sonora. Thank you very much for your service and opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Okay, Doug.
That's it, mayor. I think we bring it back to the council.
Okay. Anyone would like to start?
Well, I just I am disturbed that everybody or I shouldn't say everyone, I'm sorry, that many of the comments concerned, you know, a sort of a grasping need to to increase our tax revenues. And and when in reality, the city is in a very stringently tight budgetary situation and needs revenue. Unfortunately, none of them suggested any alternative revenues. So we are, you know, left with very, very few options for raising funds to operate the city to continue with police, fire and public works. So.
Okay. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim Plummer, did you want to speak? I almost forgot about him. Mayor Pro Tim Plummer, Mark Plummer. I'll be glad when we can go back to regular meetings. I like looking at people and talking to them and.
I had to hit the button. I think I locked him on accident there, so he should be on. He's just, Mark, you just got to unmute yourself again.
Unmuted. Yes, I would, but I would prefer to be one of the last people, if that's okay, Matt. I think there's wisdom in other people's comments, and it's a lot harder doing it from Zoom anyway. So if you would be patient, I would like to speak towards the end. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. This is. Yeah.
Well. I'll go ahead and go, I guess. I understand the 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 feelings of a lot of the people that talked this evening. I understand where they're coming from. But I don't believe it's simply a tax issue for me. It's it's a freedom of choice issue as well. You know, a majority of the people in the state voted for it, and a majority of the people in this county vote for it, and a majority of people that live in the city voted for it. There are some characterizations of use people who use it as a recreational that frankly, from what little I've seen of people, I do have people that are really close to me that that use cannabis on a regular basis. And they're not lazy people. As a matter of fact, one person who's very close to me is in a doctorate program at Ivy League school. So to say that that's being lazy, I can't understand that. I think it's 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 here already. I think that it's being delivered here from other agencies that, including when we looked in the when we had the presentation, was one of the counties that voted against it, yet it is it is probably those that the the majority of the businesses in that county deliver it here and get revenue from it in Stanislaus County. Stanislaus County voted against it. I think that's kind of interesting sidelight. I'm going to start rambling, I think, if I keep going, but I, to me, it's an issue of freedom of choice. It's an issue of if we you know, I'm going to start rambling, so just. I'm in support. I'm in support of the ordinance, let's put it that way. For a multitude of reasons that I could probably expound on incoherently, so I'm gonna let you guys go ahead.
So I can.
And I've only smoked marijuana probably three times in my life, so you know.
Really?
Yeah.
Councilmember, sorry.
So I, you know, I think most people on this council know where I stand on this issue. I'm certainly a believer in medical marijuana and it's, you know, the the benefits. I think marijuana needs to be scheduled. You know, it's a schedule one drug. It needs it. It will never be studied as as to see what where its benefits lie as long as the schedule one drug. It is here. I mean, there are so many high functioning people in this community who who are leaders in this community, who who smoke marijuana. So it's here. And I think, you know, prohibition usually never works. Prohibition always fails. It's and to try to deny something that's here that can be legal is, I believe, a fool's journey. I do, however, share many people who spoke tonight's concern about the effects of marijuana on on our youth. I think it is detrimental, especially to the adolescent brain. There are numerous studies that talk about that, that IQ levels drop, cognitive function drops. There is a a relationship between there. There seems to be a relationship, I should say, between marijuana use in adolescence and schizophrenia. So I have serious concerns about that. I do support this ordinance, but I would like some things added to it. I, you know, this council knows that every time we talk about this, I talk about education and, you know, there's just sort of a cursory acceptance of that idea. I won't pass this ordinance unless part of something about education is in here and not just handing out pamphlets in the dispensaries, although I think that's a good idea, or handing out studies, though I think that's a good idea. But there has to be education about the detrimental effects of marijuana on the adolescent brain. I also, and I don't know if this the city attorney and city administrator need to advise me on this. I actually think that every dispensary should have to pay one percent of their net profit to education in our community, and that can be, I think the city could determine how that how that looks. It could be one percent that goes to the Yes Partnership that does really good work here with suicide prevention and addiction prevention. It could go to our libraries. It could go to our rec center. It could go. There are many places where we could help the youth and educate the youth of our youth of our community about the adverse effects of marijuana. I also would like to say that I think that the city should also donate one percent of the tax revenue it receives from this to the same goal, because without education, you know, there are a lot of people who who I know who are smart, who are who are measured, who who have no idea about the effects of marijuana on the adolescent brain, and they they share marijuana. They shared marijuana with their kids, and it's not okay. And and just FYI, the adolescent brain is is up to twenty-five years. And it does have adverse effects. We all know that. Have anything else? So Jeff, I just would like you to make good on your investment in this community and invest in education on marijuana. You know, it's just, and I just think it's time for a reasonable treatment of marijuana. Its reputation has long been damned, and a lot of it isn't based on science and isn't based on fact. It's based on anecdotal experience. And it's based on bad press, so it needs to be brought from the criminal element into the light. And it needs to support education of our youth. It is here. Aniah Kirk sent, I believe, all the council members statistics, and alcohol use is rampant among these kids from like it was like ten years old. Marijuana use is already out of control, so we need to have the funds in this community to fight that. And that's what this could bring. That's that's it for me.
So hey, Mark, it is your turn, sir.
Mayor, I will speak now. Thank you very much. So I think Councilwoman Sutch makes a very good argument for the education, which I support completely. One of the things I, one of the reasons why I wanted to go last was because I respect the experience and the opinions of people who have dealt with the very dark end of drug use and criminality. And wanna wanna take that into account. The other side of the argument, though, for me is almost more a moral one, where we have been unsuccessful with prohibition of alcohol. I am, I have no experience with marijuana usage, so I don't know what it's like personally. But it seems slightly more benign than alcohol. We have no movement to prohibit alcohol again. In fact, we laud our wine bar and our our taproom, our Sonora Brewery, our local wineries. And I think they're all great businesses. To my knowledge, Hazy Bulldog has also been a good business and a responsible business. My impression is that or. My impression is that, or to my knowledge, they have not had a greater police usage or and, um, so the other part is, is that we already have pot coming in or cannabis coming in to anyone who chooses to order it from Angels Camp, from Murphy's, from, from Modesto, it's being delivered. That is a legal delivery. It is legal. It's a legal business. I think that we, as a community, have a lot more control and educational impact, if that's important to us. If we can control, or if we have some say in how it's getting sold, where it's getting sold, and to whom it's getting sold. And by licensing these businesses, we help that enormously. It's never going to be perfect. And I would have no problem with people pushing hard to make it illegal again. But that's not the case right now. We're talking about a legal product. And legal adults have a right to buy it, obviously. I think that they are better off buying it locally and keeping the city where we have some strings attached and can, can control it a little bit. And more to the point, as far as the city benefit, benefiting, this will help us essentially, I believe, with revenue. I would love to have people tell us of other avenues of income. But to keep our police, to keep our fire, to do what we need to do, despite people's belief that, that incomes of our, is are widely exaggerated. Uh, we're just trying to keep up with the competition and doing poorly. We need to improve that. We have to, to have a good city. So I am going to support this and, but I want to do it voicing respect for naysayers and the contra opinions because they're valid and they make good points. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Prokem. So I guess I'll, I'll make my comments now and, um, you know, I, I, I don't know, where do I start? I keep hearing the term gateway drug, gateway drug, you know, gateway drug is marijuana. I'm sorry, but you know, it's, it's like, um, Mr. Peters wrote a letter to the editor disagreeing with me and I'm, I'm going to say it again. Alcohol, prescription, uh, medication, and maybe 50 years ago cigarettes, the song Smoking in the Boys Room. Those were, those were gateway drugs. Now it's vaping. Exactly. So the gateway drug, somebody I guess could use marijuana, but from everything I'm seeing, maybe it was valid 30 years ago, the gateway drug could have been pot. But the reality is people are getting in, younger, younger teens are getting into their parents' liquor cabinet or getting into a couple beers in the fridge. Or the parents are like, here, have a few. I'm a generation Xer. A whole bunch of my friends' parents were buying them alcohol so they could have parties at 15, 16, 17 years old. Two years ago, I'll just share this because the council knows this. Two years ago, um, day after Christmas, I had my son, my oldest son, who I love very much, who's almost 18, uh, attacked me and my mother on Chris, uh, day after Christmas. I had him taken out in handcuffs. He wasn't hiked up on pot. He got into his mom's alcohol. And it was a horrible situation and there had to be something to stop that. So I keep hearing the term gateway drug, gateway drug. I'm sorry, but I, I highly disagree. Gateway drug is not pot. Um, now going, going from there, uh, we've been very regulatory with, in the city with Mr. Muozio's business. I've gotten a couple complaints. He's addressed those complaints. Um, Mr. Muozio has been pretty easy and pretty good to work with. So I gotta say, you know, that part, I've had a couple, I've heard a couple of people attack him and I, I just would like to set that record straight. Um, the couple of times that I've talked to him about his businesses or issues that he may be having in the future, he's addressed those pretty quick. Um, I know for a fact and, and he may, he knows this. But I know for a fact, a couple of people goofing off have came in there to try to purchase marijuana from him. He's kicked out of the business. And he wouldn't let come back. He's been pretty strict on that. So I'm, I'm confident with him. We have guidelines set up for a reason through all of this. And, you know, they've been followed and, you know, you know, I'm going to start rambling too. So, you know, I'll say it like this. I've never touched marijuana in my life and I pray that I never need to. Um, there's also not alcohol in my house. Anybody that knows me knows how I stand on this stuff, but I, I just can't. For me, it's more of freedom. The law's been passed. I don't see anyone going out that has spoken out against the marijuana. I don't see them going out in front of the bars and holding up signs. Um, or stopping people from stealing or buying alcohol at Safeway or anywhere else. I don't see that happening. To me, I see a little bit of hypocrisy in this and I'm sure I'm going to get a lot of letters now, but it's, it's just the truth. You know, I've never touched this stuff in my life and I pray I never do, but I think if you've got alcohol in your refrigerator and you drink it recreationally, I, I see some mixed, I see some mixed things here. So I, I'm, even though I, I, I can't stand marijuana, can't stand the smell of it. Um, I do believe in the freedom of this and I will support this, uh, these ordinances coming forward. The other thing I do have to say is with our planning commission, um, the planning commission voted it down four to one. Uh, the only thing I was sad to say is that the planning commission did not dissect what they were looking at. They looked straight at pot, whether it was in, in the, um, oh gosh, here I go again rambling, but basically whether it was in the zoning or not, they didn't do that. It was just, nope, can't do it. And that, that I was disappointed with. If they would have dissected it and given a good answer for it, I really would have respected that. But there, there was more to it than that. And it's actually, from what I understand, it goes back to the fake websites, but that's for a whole nother meeting. So I am, I am going to be for this and, um, I do have a total of six kids. And I educate them very strongly on why not to use marijuana or drink um, or do anything else like that. And, um, I keep a pretty strict household when it comes to any of that usage. That's why my oldest son doesn't live with me anymore, um, and preferred to live with his other parents. So there, that is enough. And I guess I'm looking for a motion or any other discussion.
Here, before there's a motion, can I just, with the public certification, give a quick update on, on something that's relevant? Which is, uh, most of the public doesn't notice it, know this, but, um, within, I think it's about two weeks. In Southern California, uh, we'll be going up against the, uh, California Attorney General in a fight with 25 other, 24 other jurisdictions to, uh, disallow, um, cannabis deliveries in areas that haven't approved those, those delivery services. We feel really good about our chances and Sonora is one of the plaintiffs who took action against the state of California to try to prevent those, uh, cannabis deliveries. One of the, uh, promises of, um, up to 18 was that was going to be that we would have local control of it and the state seemed to have gotten away from that promise. And so we're trying to hold them true to that. So I expect a decision in December or early next year, but I want everyone to know who's on here that the council has been very proactive and actually being part of a group that's initiated a litigation against the state to just prohibit, you know, uh, the lack of local control when it comes to deliveries and knowing who those people are and who they're delivering to. So with that, I just thought that would be, uh, an interesting sidebar for a motion.
But thank you, Doug. And you know, something, and, and it's been said several times, but I want everyone listening to understand that marijuana is being delivered up here legally, delivered up here as far as LA, from my understanding. I know a lot of people, Jim, I know you said that too. I know a lot of people that use and smoke and eat marijuana, a lot of people. And it goes from all the way to the, what do they call it? The greatest generation, all the way down to millennials that are using marijuana legally and also know, know of people buying and selling illegally. So it's here, whether we like it or not. I would like to have some local control over it, not because I'm wanting the tax money. To me, it's an issue of freedom. And, um, everyone needs to understand it's here and it's being delivered and business cards are being put on cars at the shopping centers to where they can deliver your marijuana. So that's basically what we're up against here. So just so everyone knows, it's, it's here. It is absolutely here.
Been here.
Yeah. And it's been here for a long time. So looking for a motion in a second.
May I, may I just make another comment? Is it, is it okay to make?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I apologize. I get started up.
Um, I just wanted to, um, to, um, sort of, um, expand on, on Colette's education, uh, angle, because when I was in high school, which was, you know, in the dark ages, but people were smoking marijuana and we had a class called Senior Problems. Because our teachers said that seniors had a lot of problems. So that was the, the likeliest name for the class. But in that class, I mean, we, we were educated about marijuana and alcohol and we got, and in the driver ed, we got really serious movies about drunk driving. I mean, that, you know, I can remember today, um, the pictures, there's some signal that the highway patrol had that they, you know, but it was trucks wrapped around trees and those kinds of things. And they sound shocking, but the message is, is there. And why? Why we aren't educating kids in school? I is, you know, I guess it's all taxation problems too, and not enough teachers and that kind of thing. But it seems to me that these kinds of programs are educational, parental, and not governmental. Yeah. I mean, church oriented, whatever. So, um, as far as the, the, uh, program is concerned, I, I feel like are the agenda that, that the, um, horse is out of the barn and, you know, we, uh, we are just here to take control and, um, and try and keep the community safe the best way we can. So. Um, and so I would move to adopt to.
I, I still have.
Sorry, sorry.
So.
I just have.
Sorry.
So sorry. I just have a few questions from, for staff or for you. Doug, um, what's the consequence of selling marijuana to minors? To someone under 21?
Um, you know, it could be considered a felony. It just depends on whether or not they, they have a recommendation. I do want to make sure we all understand that in the state of California, uh, minors who have received a recommendation from a medical doctor, and I say recommendation because it's not a prescription, it's, it's the different type of deal, um, can consume marijuana. Now that's traditionally targeted towards minors who particularly, um, suffer from epilepsy. There's been a lot of, uh, studies with, with kids who benefited from, um, uh, epilepsy and, um, and different tinctures and things of that nature. But, um, so with the exception of that, it would, it would be, it would be a wobbler. It could be prosecuted as a felony or, um, or a misdemeanor. It would depend on how much they sold and things of that nature. But, that, uh, our chief would probably be better at than me knowing off the top of his head.
Okay. Um, my, my, my next question is, um, do these, does this marijuana have to be organic? Do we know what toxins are in it? Do we know what pesticides have been used?
So it has to, it, it's required to go through testing. Um, that's all set, set through in state statute. And so you're, you know, they're not allowed to have, you know, pesticide residue or anything of that nature. And there are certain products that they can use and things of that nature. Cause if it turns up in the testing, then they have to throw the whole thing away. Be very similar to any agricultural commodity like dairy or something like that. It's just, it's just different. Now I'm talking about things that come through the legal world again, not stuff that's on the black or gray market.
Right. Well, that's another reason then to allow this. Um, can someone tell me where the cannabis waste goes? Um, I just, it's, you know, there's a waste, there has to be a waste management plan. Where does it go? Does it just go in the landfill? Where does it go? Or is it considered? I don't know.
Hazardous substance and it has to be disposed of according to those protocols. I think most of it, I think most of it's, um, incinerated. We hope they're not standing close when, when it happens, but.
So when they talk, when, when we talk about cannabis testing laboratory, what are we testing for?
Um, so from a legal standpoint, they're testing for, um, pesticide residue, things of that nature. Uh, most of them also do a cannabinoid profile to figure out, um, the different potential benefits that come from very specific cannab- cannabinoids. I, I, I mean, I know enough to be dangerous, but not enough to really be educated. And I know enough to kind of like know what they do, but not exactly why they do it. But I do know that they do those two things. The cannabinoid profile is a little bit more elective than it is, than, than it is mandated. Again, we're looking for molds. Uh, we're looking for pesticides, things that would be harmful to human consumption from a, again, from, from the state legal standpoint.
Um, no more other questions. I might be almost finished. Can someone tell me what the public benefit fee is that's been written? It's in the, um, it was actually only mentioned in the, the, um, planning commission doc, draft. Yeah. What is that?
So, so the public benefit is something that, that we kind of created and it's, it's, it's based off of, um, kind of land use law. Uh, and the benefit that the city can get that goes above and beyond, um, maybe just the fiscal impact of the project. And it's really to offset the uh, peripheral impacts the project has on, on, on the community. And so you can make them pay what would otherwise be above, you know, uh, their taxation value and, and so on and so forth. So the public benefit, uh, uh, you know, basically offsets the greater impact that it has on, on the city to kind of, uh, you know, deal with it. And so part of it is when we have a pilot program, we're dealing with a lot of unknowns. What we saw in, um, what we saw in Colorado was, um, you know, some, some increased, uh, traffic enforcement issues. And we saw some public nuisances in parks. And so that, that's how we kind of initially came up with that amount. Um, and now as it's gone along, um, across California, there's kind of a stabilization of, of, of what that public benefit amount should be. Uh, but that's just, it, it's kind of a negotiated amount. And I think to kind, take that one step further to answer your other question. The development agreement, which encapsulates, largely encapsulates the financial arrangement with whoever the operator would be. That's where we, we would stick, uh, any kind of, um, fee allocation towards education and things of that nature. So as an example, uh, Interlock, which we represent, we stuck, uh, I think, I think, I can't remember if it's a quarter cent or, or a half a percent that's set aside for specifically what you were talking about was for education. And, and so there, the only thing that you have to, to, to always keep into account is, at least as it stands right now, until our lawsuit has worked its way through the, the system, these folks are competing against both the black market and the regulated market. And so if they're going to a place like, although they're allowed to deliver, a lot of them were going to places in the Fresno area where they would get like a half a percent or a 1% tax, right, on anything that they sold. And then they would use that four or 5% or more advantage to kind of sell at a reduced rate and you know, places like Sonora and Angels Camp and things of that nature. And so that's one of the things that we've been dealing with. And there's a number of jurisdictions that, that have done it in particular, right around Fresno, that have become problematic, um, from a statewide perspective, because it, it kind of negates some of the, you know, it, it, it takes away any local control and, uh, we're not quite sure that they're doing it correctly. And police doesn't even know when they're pulling somebody over, whether or not, you know, they're carrying significant amount of money. And I don't know, to the degree you guys are following the legislation, the legislature this year is increasing the amount of, amount of product and cash that they can carry, the, the amounts that I would consider to be unsafe.
So just to follow up, we, we receive a public benefit fee right now for medicinal development fees for, um, from Hazy Bulldog. Um, as I stated in, in the staff report, um, under state law, we cannot collect sales tax from medicinal cannabis sales. Um, and so the, the revenue we receive from the two or one, we have two development agreements, but one that is currently active is through that public benefit fee, which is the revenue we receive.
Yep. Yep.
So, so we, I can't tell what the recommendation is. We can't add an education, a fee to pay for education out.
We can. It's through the development agreements, not through the ordinance as written.
I, I think you could add intent language and that you would like to be considered for, you know, an adoption of any development agreements, but development agreements are where the, the financial arrangement is contractually created effectively. But it would be appropriate to add intent language if that's what you would like to see in the fut- in the future. Again, this isn't approving any specific, it's not, it's expanding the opportunity to have something in the areas where they can be. It's, it, there's not another dispensary that all of a sudden is online. It has to go, that dispensary uh, to open would have to go and find a location and go through the planning uh, department, have to go through city council. It has about four or five different approvals, depending on if we do them together. Uh, whether or not they get appealed uh, before they would go on the book. So this is all prospective in terms of whether or not we're even going to allow somebody to apply. Uh, it doesn't mean that by doing this though, it doesn't allow them to fill. Like Jeff, as an example, Hazy Bulldog is going to have to apply to be able to do uh, recreational if this would, would, would pass. And he can't even do that for about till next year, if this was to pass, because he has to go second reading and then wait thirty days.
Did you get everything answered?
I get, I think so. I'm not sure. Okay.
Yeah, my, my brain hurts too, to tell you the truth.
Is, if you want to, if you want that included, included in the motion is intent language, and that gives a, a very clear directive to Mary Rose and myself to make sure that when we come bring something back, that it includes that provision about it. Uh, and then what we would probably do is bring you back a menu of different options because the money isn't endless. So we'd bring you back a, a, you know, a menu of different options for you to select from if, if that was the kind of like mandate.
So if that, but Doug, so if that, if we do add intent language, does that uh, change all the notifications in the second reading and make this great? Okay.
Not if it's included as part of the motion. So it could be a, a change from the dais.
I'm not sure what motion to make anymore.
Well.
I, I think you just say whatever, whatever the.
What about the intent language?
With the intent language about it just requiring education.
Mayor, if I could just suggest some language, if, if the goal is to approve this with the education language, I would, I would recommend that the motion be uh, to approve the ordinance as written with the addition of intent language that would require a certain percentage of it to be determined later uh, to be included to the development agreement for, for uh, education of adolescent on the effect of cannabis on adolescent brains.
Or should that be, um, Doug? That's assuming uh, everyone on the, on the council is in agreement with that.
Correct. It could be, it could be more just for the purposes.
Could that just be a discussion item at some further? Just go straight with the, with the ordinance and then have uh, with the knowledge that we're going to discuss this at a later time?
Hundred percent. Absolutely. You could do that as well. I was just trying to give you, that was the direction I wanted to give them the language to potentially use.
Because that way we could, we could, we could all sort it all out.
Can I ask a question then?
Sure.
So if the council doesn't agree, when we, you know, try to sort this all out down the road, that, but we vote for this ordinance now, that means it could potentially be passed without any educational requirements. Is that correct?
That's good. That's correct. So when, if, if they could override, um, but by the same token, on the development agreement, if, if, if there was a provision in here to, to require it and the council didn't want to, the council could either repeal it at a later time and or overrule it when approving that development agreement. So I think that in effect, you can get there either way. It's just a question of how you want to memorialize it now. I mean, candidly, even if you don't include it, I think Mary Rose and I are aware of the fact that you would like to see that as an, as an option presented to the council. Again, I think at that point in time, once we know what the financial arrangement would be, um, it would be for you to look at what percentage of what's available would, that is most appropriate for that purpose.
That's, yes, I, I agree with Doug on that, on that last part.
You know, where I'm um, struggling here is that I'm, I don't want to approve this if there's a chance that we're not going to demand education. I, I do not. I think it's irresponsible. So if that, you know, so that's my question.
May I interject for a second?
Sure. Oh, excuse me.
Mark. Yeah, Mark. Okay.
I'm sorry. Well, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go for it.
Can you hear me? Okay. Well, um, my sense of the council is that we support, at least in a general sense, an educational component. You certainly won't find resistance from me. And I, I don't think that you're likely to find yourself in a position where you felt you were semi-tricked into voting for something that you would otherwise support that where, where we uh, backtrack on it later. Uh, but you know, we, we do need to look at numbers and what's available and what our goals with the education would be. Uh, and I don't think that this evening is the time that we can really do that effectively. So if we're gonna, well, anyway, that's it for the moment.
Well, my concern is who's going to administer it? If the city's going to administer it, I'm not sure that's the proper role of the city.
I think administered, do the education.
Yeah.
No, it would be like yes partnership or, or you'd be given to someone who already is set up to do it. The city certainly isn't equipped to do.
Is, is that given a pub, that public benefit of funds too?
I don't know. I just, I mean, I can't support increasing marijuana in this town without some education. There has been none. And I can't support it and I won't. So if people are hesitant, that's fine. I can, you'll still get it passed.
So, yeah, as a point of reference in the city of Turlock, which is the only other city I have that has um, created the education component, they gave it to the police to fund their, uh, just, I think it's a just say no um, campaign. I don't know if chief has that kind of program that's unfunded, but that's, that's where they directed their funds. And they're, they're significant, it's at least in, in Turlock because it's a larger town. It's, it's about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So.
We do have school resource officer programs that address drug usage of teens in schools. I don't know if you want to have the um, chief address any of that, but that is something that, you know, we can always bring forth for the council's consideration.
So the city does have a mechanism that, that there could be done some education through, is what you're saying?
We do have a school resource officer program and I know the programming um, that is addressed through that is, is definitely looking at drug usage and, and whatnot of, of, of teen. So, but I, I know the chief has a lot more in-depth knowledge of that program than I do, but I know the programming for those, those school resource officers addresses that as well.
Well, then I'm a little more comfortable with that because I, I didn't want to start it anymore.
We get it through the tobacco grants. So it, you know, they have to address smoking and other programs. So, so it kind of fits. Yeah, our, our school resources, school resource officers, we have two part-time, they're funded through tobacco grants.
Okay.
Yes, can I get a question?
Oh, absolutely.
So Mary Rose, if we, if the money comes from the dispensaries as a, what is it called? A public benefit fee. Could it go to a library? Could it go to an after-school program? Could it go to the yes partnership? Or does it have to go to police?
It doesn't have to go to the police. Um.
Or just legally, can it go there to those other places? I mean, I'm not saying that that's where it should go. I'm just curious.
From a legal.
There needs to be a broader, go ahead, go ahead, Doug.
From a legal standpoint, the answer is yes. If, if it serves a larger community goal, it's not a gift of public funds, which I think is the, otherwise would be the concern. So you can give it to any of those things to, to run specific programs that would be approved uh, or supported, I guess, by the council. But that would be.
I agree, but I definitely agree. There needs to be a broader discussion of, of where are the, where will we potentially want to put those programmings in?
I do as well.
That's the term I was looking, that's the term I was looking for, gift of public funds. And he answered that. So then I'm in agreement with that.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? Anyone?
The education funds then, would they be focused on the city since they're city-generated or would they be county-wide?
They'd be city.
I just wanted to clarify that.
They would have to be city.
All right, thank you.
That's our responsibility.
Okay, so we're looking for a.
Okay, writing if anyone.
Motion.
Going to move to waive the first reading to, uh, to reading of ordinance and consider um, move to waive the first reading and um, adopt ordinance to adopt ordinance eight seven three amending the Sonora Municipal Code, Chapter eight point three six uh, cannabis business regulation and ordinance eight seven four amending the Sonora Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen dot uh, dot sixty dot oh four oh cannabis cannabis businesses and set a second reading and a possible adoption of the ordinances for November sixteenth, twenty twenty at five P M. With the caveat that we are going to um, uh, at a later date, discuss as part of the development agreement, um, an educational component fee. Is that, is that a correct motion, Mr. Counselor?
That works, ma'am. I mean, but.
That works.
Almost called you ma'am.
Yeah, I know. Does that suit everybody's?
Well, it's a discussion. It's not a commitment. It's a commitment to discuss.
Um, I will second the motion.
Hang on, hang on. Let me, let me change the verb. I forgot what, I forgot how. So I said discuss to discuss uh, a development fee to um, future adoption of, of a.
Incorporate.
Does that make?
Yeah.
Okay. So did you hear that, Mark? There was a, instead of discuss, I said further adoption of. Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Second as amended.
Thank you. Okay, so a very long amended motion by Councilmember Garaventa. Uh, second by Mayor Pro Tim Plummer. Mary Rose, roll call please. Roll call.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Plummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Satch.
Aye.
It passes five to zero. Does anyone need a break before we continue to go? Everybody good?
Not me. I think we're pretty.
Okay, good.
Plus four marks on the phone, probably.
Okay, so next, under public hearing, uh, moved my paperwork, confused myself. Okay, uh, public hearing, adopt resolution number eleven dash two dash twenty twenty B that subject the city of Sonora to the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act introduced by title and waive the first reading of ordinance number eight seventy-five amending chapter three uh, dot six zero sections three dot six zero dot zero ten through three dot six zero dot two hundred of the city of Sonora Municipal Code to adopt the provisions of the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act procedures and set second reading and possible adoption for November sixteenth, twenty twenty at five P M. Mary Rose.
That was a mouthful.
Ah.
So this item is actually coming from your administrative services director, Chris Gorski. So I'm going to go, go ahead and let him uh, lead this discussion.
Good evening. Sorry about that. So this is the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. Uh, the city's existing purchasing procedures were updated in two thousand sixteen. Given the scope of materials and services purchased by the city now and into the future and the evolving best practices in purchasing, uh, these policies have become outdated. Uh, currently, the city, when constructing, when constructing public projects, uh, must follow the state public contract code requiring the city to publicly bid all construction contracts at five thousand dollars or more. Um, this very small or low amount uh, becomes very cumbersome and inefficient for the city. It requires staff to develop billable plans, specifications and estimates and to advertise and award public bid projects. The cost of just doing this can exceed five thousand dollars. Uh, the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act is legislation that was passed in nineteen eighty-three to help promote u- uniformity of the cost accounting standards and bidding procedures on construction work performed or cr- contracted by public entities in the state of California. The act is a voluntary program available to all public agencies in the state, but it applies to only those who have chosen to opt in. Uh, the act allows for public projects of sixty thousand dollars or less. Uh, they can be performed by negotiated contract or by purchase order. Uh, projects under sixty or under two hundred thousand or less may be contracted by informal procedures set forth in the act. Public projects of more than two hundred thousand dollars must be uh, bid by traditional formal procedures. The benefits to the city for adopting this act are uh, simplified bidding requirements for smaller projects under two hundred thousand. Uh, reduces the number of formal bids based on project size, which is beneficial to the city with its limited staffing. Uh, it also provides expedited contracting. Um, it, uh, it expedites that process for many of the city's projects. You know, the city does not have uh, projects more than two hundred thousand very often. Uh, many agencies have appreciated the program because it has given them more leeway in the execution of public projects under a certain dollar amount. This reduces the time and effort and expense associated with bidding projects under two hundred thousand and it simplifies administration of those projects. Most of the necessary accounting overhead uh, is already being done in the finance department and is in place. Uh, any needed adjustments when they are required will be relatively simple for us to accommodate. Um, for these reasons, the staff is recommending we adopt the resolution which will opt the city of Sonora into the act and then the ordinance which provides changes to the municipal code to um, provide procedures to follow the act. Now is it?
Okay.
I don't, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, to me, everything just seems common sense.
I will just follow up, just um, coming from other jurisdictions, most jurisdictions are already, have already implemented these public um, works project, construction code. Um, so coming to the city and, and noticing that we didn't, we didn't opt into this program um, was a little bit surprising to me because it does save a lot of staff time and a lot of administrative overhead. You can imagine, you know, having to go through a whole bid procedure, which takes a lot of staff time, a lot of hours to put together a, a bidding procedure and packet on any project over five thousand dollars. Um, you know, that's a very low threshold. Um, and then we're, we've always run into the fact where we've had very limited um, uh, companies that bid on our projects. So putting together, you know, big bidding packets for maybe one or two companies to bid. Um, this will save a lot of staff time in the long run and a lot of administrative overhead costs.
Okay, so council doesn't have any questions. I guess I will ask for public comment on this. And don't everyone raise your hands at once?
If you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine if you're on a phone or plus the raise your hand button. Mayor, as surprising as this may be, there are no hands raised.
I, I just can't believe it. Okay, so I will bring it back to the council for more discussion, a motion in a second.
Sure. Um, yeah, I mean, it, if being in such a small town and, and having so little staff time and everything, this makes perfect sense. So. I moved to adopt resolution eleven dash oh two dash two twenty 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 B and introduced by title and waive the first reading of ordinance eight seventy-five, amending chapters three point six oh and Sections oh one oh to two point two zero zero, the City of Sonora Municipal Code and set the second reading and pause for a possible adoption on for November sixteenth twenty twenty at five P M.
We'll converse second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Garaventa, second by Councilmember Sagerstrom. Mary Rose, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Aye.
And Councilmember Sutch.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. And we are on to new business. Consideration to approve the design of the street banners for downtown Sonora as recommended by the Vision Sonora Committee. Mary Rose.
Thank you so much. Doug, I need to share my screen once again, if you wouldn't mind.
Yep, you should be able to do it.
So the public could be able to see what we're looking at.
You should be you should be okay to do it.
All right. Just a second. Can everybody see that? Can you see the banner?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I will say that your Vision Sonora Committee has actually your subcommittee of your Vision Sonora Committee, your Marketing and Design Review Subcommittee, has been working very diligently on on projects concerning Linenburg and so forth. And one of the projects as well that they're looking at is to replace the banners that line downtown Washington Street. And with that, they have met numerous times to go over the design, to go over what pictures they would like to see on those banners, to the color, to the font. And then on October sixteenth, they brought the design of the banners to the overarching Vision Sonora Committee. And the overarching committee voted to accept the banners. And with that, we are now asking the council's approval to allow for the changing of the banners, to retire the old and to allow for these new ones. I'm just gonna kind of go through the designs for you. They were included in the packet, but for the public's view as well. What we're looking at, this is the first one. This banner shows your second Saturday. I don't know if it's, I can't see from your perspective, but if it's visible. The next one, and I'm just gonna kind of run this way is your farmer's market. Pretty vibrant. The third one is a picture of the Sonora High Marching Band. The next one is a painting, actually, of a picture of, looks like your motherload parade of a of a activity there for your motherload roundup. This is the picture of the dome. This is our Tuolumne County Museum. We kind of went back and forth on this because it is Tuolumne County. However, the building is in the city of Sonora. It's a beautiful building. And so the the committee wanted to include this picture as well. Of course, the red church. And the last one is a picture of the roundup, you know, on horseback going into the visitor center. So what we're asking for is the council to approve the banners as approved by both the Subcommittee Design and Review Committee and also the overall Vision Sonora Committee to allow for these banners to be used in downtown Sonora. And if you want me to go back, I can.
Councilmember Sutch has a question.
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing so you can see.
I thought you might want to mention who's paying for these.
I'm sorry.
I thought you might want to mention who's paying for this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. The Sonora Chamber of Commerce is paying for this. So there's no money from the City of Sonora that from the general fund that would be paying for these banners. They're being purchased and paid for by this Chamber of Commerce.
Also, there's twenty-four of them. There'll be three of eight designs.
You said twenty-four.
Eight designs.
Okay.
Sorry.
I hate these masks.
That was masked dialing.
So I'll just throw it out there, and I don't know how many people are on this, but on the call still, but I was on the board for the Sonora Chamber when they did the original banners years ago. So I think this is really nice, and I think it's a nice update, and it's gonna look very nice. So
Great.
But it's been twelve, thirteen years.
Yeah, Ty Whipple was on that when
Yeah.
you were doing
Yeah.
Because he was
Ty Whipple, Shirley, Brian. So just a lot of changing, a lot of changing going on. But yeah, so I want to thank the Sonora Chamber and I guess we'll ask for public comment unless anyone else has anything they want to say.
It looks like, of course, Lori Lehman would like to comment on this item.
Of course, sorry about that.
No, you can add more helpful insight, Lori.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say, yeah, thank you for telling everybody that the Sonora Chamber of Commerce is is putting the bill for this. And we are going to have a local contractor do the production of it, so it'll stay in our community. And we're hoping to get the production done and hung up after the holiday season. When the Christmas decorations come down, the new banners will go up. So with that, we hope that you enjoy the design. So it'll be three of each design going all the way up and down Washington Street.
Okay.
Anybody else would like to speak? Please press star nine or use the raise your hand feature.
Anyone else?
No one else with a raised hand, mayor?
Well, we'll bring it back to the council and Councilmember Sutch.
I just want to thank Lori. She's really spearheaded this. She's done. She's worked really, really hard. And we're really lucky to have her on Vision, on the Vision Sonora Committee. As always, I'd like to just say that I like would wish that the tribes were represented on one of these banners or that they had at least had been contacted to see if they wanted to be represented. That's that's my only regret. But I think they look great. I love that the the woman on horseback riding into the visitor center is still, it was include was kept in the the group. I thought that I think that that's a really playful, fun banner. So that's it.
It's a woman?
I thought it was a
I thought it was Coyote Sam, actually.
It's a man. It's just someone on horseback going up to the visitor center. Sorry, I was combining. I can tell.
So you you mentioned the tribe. Was the Tribax asked to?
I don't think so.
Sarah was gonna get some images, but I I never did get any.
Yeah. It's okay. We can just have to. I just want to. I just will always bring that up. We can. We can move forward.
Okay, so I guess we're looking for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the design of the street banners for downtown Sonora as recommended by the Vision Sonora Committee.
One second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Sutch and a second by Councilmember Sagerstrom. Mary Rose, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa. Councilmember Garaventa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Sutch.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Okay, item number eight under new business, adopt resolution number eleven dash zero two dash twenty twenty dash A approving the release of the three-hour parking restrictions in downtown Sonora during the holiday season.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Normally, you guys would have received this as part of the overall packet to approve the Christmas parade because it would have been included with the resolution that would go to Caltrans to use the state highway. As we all know, things have changed and we have a different plan moving forward. So we wanted to bring this separately. And I did talk to the police chief and he was in support of it. We do, under the code section ten oh eight oh eight oh, the council can, by resolution, modify parking times or I think they have a different name for that in the three-hour parking restrictions. But oh, I'm sorry, the zones, there's parking zones. And so you're gonna be modifying the parking zone A. He would like to go ahead and do that as we've done in the past from mid-November through early-January. So for this year, it's Monday, November sixteenth through Monday, January fourth, and it's all of the streets that are included within Zone A. And we have included a copy of the map to show where that would be. And that is what they have done in the past. And we are seeking your approval.
Okay. Any of the council have questions? Is there any public comment on this item?
Don't see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council for motion in a second.
It's moved to adopt resolution eleven dash oh two dash twenty twenty dash A. That's it.
I second it.
Motion by Councilmember Garaventa, second by Councilmember Sutch. Mary Rose, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Aye.
And Councilmember Sutch.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. And we're at the end of the meeting. So Councilmember Department Heads Reports are start all. I will start off with Fire Chief New. She's on here.
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening. We're glad to have you.
Yeah, I have nothing to report out tonight, but thank you, guys, for all your input and listening to the conversations.
Thank you. Okay, our Police Chief VanderWiel.
No report tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Rochelle Kellogg.
Hi, yeah, just a couple of things. One is last Saturday was the last day of the farmer's market. So it is done for the year was all in all, it was a very successful year considering the restrictions and other things that we were dealing with. But I know everybody will be looking forward to it coming back in May. The other thing is, I'm sure you guys are aware, but we are gonna start the Sonora Street Striping Project. And that'll be starting, it'll be on November fifth and sixth, and there's various streets. This is being funded through the SB, some of our SB one Monday money that we have. So it's nice to see this project move forward. We're working with the city engineer on this. This will be one of the one, a project like this in the future will benefit from Chris's hard work. So it'll make our bidding a lot easier on some of these projects. So it's greatly appreciated. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I've got a quick question for Rochelle, actually. You're kind of part of the head of public works more or less right at this point, right?
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
Okay, okay. I I did notice that there are some, there's a Long Shepherd Street especially, that there's a few alligatoring spots that are kind of turning into potholes. And I was wondering if that was those are gonna get treated before the weather gets bad.
Yeah, I'll ask Mike to take a look at it.
Yeah, I just they just seem to be worse than the last week, and they're starting to come up, so.
No problem. We're having a meeting on Thursday. I'll bring it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Finance Director, Chris Gorski.
Nothing else tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Okay, our City Attorney, Doug White.
Nothing more tonight, mayor, than wishing everybody a happy and safe election day tomorrow. Political nerd, like Christmas for political nerd. So like, like myself, I'm talking.
And then our City Administrator, Mary Rose.
I said, just a quick update. Staff has been working very diligently and very hard to have our Sonora Drive Through Christmas Parade organized, and there will be a full formal update on the Sonora Christmas Parade on November sixteenth at our next meeting for the council and the public.
Yay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Sagerstrom.
I attended the Energy Action Committee last Wednesday, and Chris has submitted a request for an energy audit from the Tuolumne County Power Authority. So that's moving forward, and we're still working on opportunities to publicize and merchandise the the savings and rebates that we can on energy that we can get out to both city and county residents. I attended, and you guys, you missed a good time, the Sonora Chamber Halloween Mixer or October Mixer. It was really fun, actually, and I won a pumpkin lantern. But we were, the next meeting is in December, and they were discussing the decoration of merchant windows along Main Street. And I asked whether City Hall had ever participated, and they said no. So I have recruited Colette, and we are going to decorate the City Hall window if that passes approval of our city administrator.
Really good taste.
Yeah. And then just some updates from the Yes Partnership. For anybody out there who's listening, they have the first five TC grants for small grants for one to for one to seven thousand dollars for resilient families and health and development. So that is available on the Yes Partnership, first five TC branch. Also ACTA is is having a smart money class for high school seniors for budget and debt debt management. And that information is available from ACTA. But it's coming up on November twenty ninth and December seventeenth.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sutch.
I don't really have much. I did have my first electric vehicle meeting with Cole Presbilla and Sherry Brennan and a representative from the state and the governor's state governor's office. So that's pretty fun. It's very exciting that, you know, exciting to think that that could happen up here about adding more charging stations. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Garaventa.
About the only thing I that came up this week, this last couple of weeks, is the Visitors Bureau Marketing Meeting. They're doing just an amazing job of trying to market our county and our city through the COVID crisis. And they had a couple of reports from different agencies. It's, I can't imagine what they're, you know, having to deal with trying to get people to come here in the era of COVID. But yeah, but they are. They are trying to do their best to to make sure that we don't fall off the radar, certainly as a as a destination once during, you know, safely during COVID and and once we finally hopefully get over this as a as a destination again. So thank you. That's it for me.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, is he still on?
Yeah.
I am. Thank you, and I I want to thank everyone for your indulgence with the the shaky technology from the campfire, but it's still wonderful to be able to attend.
You're up at the, you're up at the top of the tree, Mark.
Excellent. Thank you, Mark.
Not quite, but it's anyway. So I look forward to being at home for the next meeting.
So you're bringing a quart of wood for everybody, right?
Oh, two, two, because there's lots of wood here. You bet.
And I have nothing tonight, other than in about twenty-four hours, we'll definitely know everybody's tense, but just be kind to one another. I mean, let's all get along. So
And then it starts again for four more years.
Yes, it does. So have a good night, everyone. Have a good night, everyone.